Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. City council members, comments, three minutes. Would any council member like to make a comment at this time? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were a couple of events that I attended in the past two weeks, and I just wanted to share a little bit about each of them, although they are different events. But I'll explain why I'm mentioning them both in a second. So one event was the Seroptimist Awards. They give out scholarships to single moms who are trying to complete their education. And it was just a really moving thing to see these young women who have overcome a lot. Some of them were in the foster care system, some of them were victims of human trafficking. But all of them were trying to overcome the circumstances that they had in life and complete their education and set a really good example for their own children. So I thank Terry Rose for inviting us to come to that event. And the second one was the Council on Aging Meeting, which was March the 2nd. And among other administrative things like going over their budget, they also had three guests who shared their stories about being homeless and being a senior citizen. It highlights that this is a particular concern, seniors who are homeless. I think we'll see some statistics today on the presentation with the Homeless Task Force folks that show that there's a significant proportion of folks in the shelter and folks that they encounter on their day-to-day who are senior citizens. But those are two different types of events, but what got me thinking about the two of them together was this. So as I was leaving the Seroptimist event that night, I was thinking how great it was that our community extends so much charity to folks in need. So we help not only single moms, but we help kids in the foster care system, kids who need any kind of help at all. We help people who are victims of domestic violence, animals, environmental causes, you name it. And what struck me about that particular knowledge, knowing how generous our community is, is this. We're going to have a lot of discussions about housing tonight and in the future. It's difficult for me to think about how charitable we can be and reconcile that with, at the same time, saying to people, "Great work, but I hope you don't think that you deserve to live in Huntington Beach." We have a tendency, or at least I'll speak for myself, I have a tendency to focus on, you know, ordinances. Should we adopt this? Should we pass that? What's the, you know, dispute du jour? But all of these policy decisions matter, and they say something about who we are as a community. And so my question to myself is, what does it mean if I am charitable and, you know, donate my time to causes, but at the same time, we withdraw that hand of charity when folks need a place to live? Thank you. That's all.
Any other members? Seeing none. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Not for this portion of the meeting, no.
Okay. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak at this portion?
We do. We have two people signed up to speak. Will you please both come to the podium? We have Michael Shepherd and Shirley Detloff.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Shirley Detloff, and I'm representing Homeless United. We have read the report and wanted you to know that we appreciate the work your staff has done. This report shows all of the cost and projects and what the city or other entities were responsible for. We hope that you will use this as the foundation to build upon and to continue working towards eliminating homelessness. Through the work of many individuals, we were able to meet the legal requirements and to meet the needs of those who, for many reasons, were unsheltered. We now have a navigation center, Be Well, a converted hotel, which will be for permanent housing, and soon-to-be open apartment for elderly women who find themselves homeless. I hope you will appreciate the work being done by your staff and to see that you have a very well-prepared staff report, and I hope we can start building your future based on their conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Speaker.
Thank you, council. My name is Michael Shepherd, and I am the Housing Advocacy Program Manager at Orange County United Way. One of my roles there is to be of assistance to cities to help them understand the context of homelessness and how they can be part of housing solutions for all of our communities. We are nonpartisan, and we are not seeking any funding from the city of Huntington Beach. We appreciate the decision of this council to unanimously call for this study session earlier this year. I had the opportunity to review the staff presentation, and I have a few notes for your consideration. When we look at the city-by-city breakdowns, there are areas where Huntington Beach has been at the leading front of shelter and housing solutions from the last few years. This is positive momentum that I would encourage you to keep in mind as you are considering your options in the near future. Another consideration that other cities have brought up in our conversations has to do with the price tag of homelessness programs and housing developments. Your staff report wisely distinguishes between funding sources from beyond the city and those from the general fund. Lastly, I want to offer our assistance to support your leadership here in Huntington Beach. Homelessness is an issue that affects all of our communities, and our response is stronger when we are able to collaborate in good faith and involve the voices of people with lived experience, as well as practitioners. Whether you are coming to this report on the basis of public safety, economic concern, faith commitments, or humanitarian relief, the prioritization of housing is the most expedient, sustainable, and dignified way to support your constituents, both housed and those yet to be housed. Thank you for your attention, and I'm looking forward to working with you more in the future.
Thank you, Michael. Is that all, the speakers?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the study session and/or closed session agendas. Individuals wishing to provide comment on the items may do so in person by filling out Request to Speak and deliver to City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note, the Brown Act does not allow discussion on any topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with council members on the item not on the agenda may schedule an appointment contacting City Council Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or email entirecitycouncil@city.council@surfcity-hb.org. I should have done that before, obviously, but I want to make sure that it's in the record. So now, study session. City Clerk, we're going to staff. Do we have a presentation? CPAB roll call?
Yeah, we're going to do the CPAB roll call right now.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and start that. Chair Massey. Chair, Vice Chair Hoskinson.
Here.
Secretary Paris.
Here.
Board members Hammel.
Here.
Inoway.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Latchman. I think we have a quorum.
Thank you. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Good afternoon, Mayor Strickland and members of the city council, and Vice Chair Hoskinson and members of the Citizen Participation Advisory Board. Charles Kovak, Housing Manager. With me this afternoon is Greg Wong. He's our Senior Housing Analyst. This afternoon, I'll be presenting on the upcoming 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant Funding, as recommended to the city council by the CPAB and the proposed home investment partnerships by the program funding.
Thank you. Community Development Block Grant, commonly referred to as CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Funds, referred to in home funds, come to the city as Huntington Beach Entitlement Grants from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. For 2023-24, the city will be allocated $1.17 million in CDBG funds and approximately $668,000 in home funds. This is a 1% reduction from the current year of 2022-23. Public participation is a major component in the CDBG and home funding process. The CDBG and home funding process begins every year with a Notice of Funding Availability inviting applications for eligible public services programs. This year, the city solicited proposals from more than 20 local social service providers and received seven applications. Applications were evaluated for program eligibility, and then the CPAB held three public meetings to review the applications, hear presentations from the applicants, and make funding recommendations to the city council for their consideration. The CPAB's recommendations are basically largely on the city's priority objectives for the programs that are established by the city council in a document called the Consolidated Plan. Our current consolidated plan was adopted in 2020. CDBG is a principal federal program for providing our local governments with grants to improve the physical, economic, and social conditions in their communities. The purpose of the program is to create and maintain decent housing and suitable living environment and to expand economic opportunities for low- and moderate-income residents. The CDBG activities must meet one of the three national objectives shown here. For the CDBG activities in the city of Huntington Beach, the national objective is met by providing projects, programs, that serve and benefit low- and moderate-income residents. As outlined in the city's 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, the local priority objectives are to address housing, homelessness, special-needs individuals, youth, upgrade of public facilities, and infrastructure improvements. The CDBG allocations are broken down by three categories, including a maximum of 15% that can be spent on CDBG public service activities, a maximum of 20% that can be spent on administration, with the balance of 65% allocated to capital and housing preservation projects. Home is the principal federal program, providing local governments with grants for affordable housing for low- and moderate-income residents, and consists of eligible activities such as housing rehabilitation and tenant-based rental assistance program, also known as TBRA. As with CDBG public services, CDBG capital activities must meet the local objectives identified in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, including preserving existing affordable housing, creating new affordable housing, and TBRA. Similar to CDBG funding, home funding allocations are broken down by the three categories, including a maximum of 10% can be spent on home administration, 15% on a community housing development organization, which develops affordable housing projects, and they're commonly referred to as CHODO projects, with the balance of 75% allocated to creating new and preserving existing affordable housing. The total estimated funding available through CDBG and home next fiscal year is approximately $2.5 million. It should be noted that the $2.5 million includes the 2023-24 allocation of $1.17 million, along with estimated carryover funds from the current program year of 2023-22-23, and program income derived from loan repayments. And then, actually, I should correct myself. The 2.5 is the total of home and CDBG. CDBG alone is $1.56 million. Prior to showing you the CDBG and home funding recommendations, I want to outline the funding process and next steps. The process started, like I said earlier, last November and December with the NOFA and the application deadlines. In February, the CPAB heard presentations from each applicant and made their funding recommendations. After this study session today, the city council will consider the final recommendations as part of the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan at a required public hearing on April 18th. Upon city council consideration and approval on April 18th, the 23-24 Action Plan will be submitted to HUD by May 15th, and the new program year will begin on July 1st. It should be noted that in addition to the considering approval of the action plan in April, the city council will also consider amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan. Amendments to the plan consist of updating council meeting dates and times, reducing the number of public hearings to be aligned with HUD regulations, and updating contact information for city staff. On February 22nd, the CPAB recommended to the city council the following public service funding allocations, based upon the maximum CDBG public services allocation of $175,750, which is 15% of the allocation for 23-24. The CPAB recommended four organizations for funding, as shown here. One application was not recommended for funding, South County Outreach. Two applications were recommended for funding but did not receive full funding, as the CPAB recommended only full funding for the Oak View Children's Bureau and Robinson Ness Programs. And as you can see, the amount of funding was a lot less than the requested funding, so some consideration and deliberations by the CPAB had to be met to reduce and make sure that all fit within the $175,750 mark. The recommended allocation for CDBG administration is shown here. The maximum allocation is 20%, and includes the HUD-mandated activity of Fair Housing Services, which the city received only one applicant for, from the Fair Housing Foundation. The CDBG capital project allocations were primarily based upon continuing the current projects and programs related to TBRA administration, special code enforcement, ADA infrastructure improvements, and the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Grant Program. The home allocations are based upon continuing the current TBRA program with service providers Mercy House and Families Forward, which amounts to $400,000, and funding the second year of the mobile home TBRA program for seniors for approximately $350,000. The 15% allocation for a CHODO project will be reserved for a future affordable housing project that is to be considered for development by the city council. The balance of the funding is for home administration, consisting of the maximum 10%. That concludes the presentation. I would also like to offer briefings to each council member if you would like to discuss the proposed projects and funding in more detail before the April 18th public hearing meeting. And finally, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the CPAB members on their efforts and invite Vice Chair Hoskinson to say a few words regarding the process and any other recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Mike Hoskinson. I'm the Vice Chair of Citizen Participation Board this year. Chairman Massey was called away at the last minute for a work, out-of-state work binge, so here I am. Just wanted to first thank staff for all their hard work, and of course, all our board members. We were struggling a bit because all of these charities are fantastic, and they do good work. And the only real problem we have is we need more money to give them. They, you know, there's some really good folks doing some hard work out there for the folks, and they just need more money, so we'd love to work this year to figure out where we can get more funding because of the limitations of the 15% overall. But, and we want to, of course, thank all the folks that came and presented for us, and we are so sorry we weren't able to fund a few of them, but we know we have over 25 different charities that are potentially able to get money from the city, and we'd like to work to get them back in the mix. There's a lot of them, seniors-based ones that were not there, so we'd love to get them back in and apply and get some folks. But again, it comes down to funding, and we certainly would entertain any thoughts about how to get more money into this arena so we could do some more good. But we did some good this year, and we're real proud of it. But thank you for the time. We appreciate it.
Any questions from the members?
I just would like to request one of those briefings that you offered. Thank you. Thank you guys for putting this together, all the hard work.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank everybody. I thank everybody for all of their efforts with this. I know it was difficult. I did go to one of the sessions where the presentations were given, and it's difficult because there are so many, so many good things that are being done. And this is really kind of a drop in the bucket for many of them as well. I did want to acknowledge South County Outreach, as well. I know you weren't able to give funding to them or recommend funding, but one thing that they do is provide assistance for those with food insecurity. And I think that this is one thing, as we move forward with regards to homelessness, that we will need to keep an eye on as well in the prevention arena. And then, one final note on this, and I know we'll get to talk about it more at the next session when we speak about it, but I did note that at least three of the entities here are for people supporting, or organizations supporting homeless youth or underhoused youth. And I think that that's really notable, especially given that we often talk about who are the homeless. And in this case, three organizations are supporting our community members and those that are underhoused. So, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none. Members, we're going to move to closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54.
We have one other item.
One moment.
There's two study sessions to make.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I want to rush the, no, never mind. Sorry. Thanks again for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you. Staff, do we have another presentation? Ooh, watch, watch your step.
Just as soon as you said it.
Chief, thank you. Sorry about that.
So, thank you for the opportunity. Lieutenant Brian Smith is going to go through a homelessness services presentation, and he's going to go over some numbers, some background, and some history of the, of our homeless services operations here, so I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Mayor Strickland and Honorable City Council. On January 17th, the city council requested then-Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Health Services, Jason Austin, return to provide counsel with a comprehensive review of the city's efforts to address homelessness. Since that time, Mr. Austin resigned, and I was asked to assume some of his responsibilities in the interim. I'm honored to be here to share the information, not only with you, the council, but our community as well. Throughout this presentation, I may use terms such as homeless, individuals experiencing homelessness, and transient. These terms will be used synonymously to mean an individual or family who lack a fixed, regular, or adequate residence. This presentation will be focused on what we have done leading up to today. I will come back to the city council next meeting and present an updated 90-day plan to address homelessness in our community.
Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
Can we ask questions throughout the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since Huntington Beach is a tourist destination with a Mediterranean climate and amenities that draw an estimated 11 million visitors annually, one could expect our city to also be a destination for individuals experiencing homelessness. While there have been actions in the past to address homelessness within our community, the foundation of our current programs started around 2012, when a school out of police officers took it upon themselves to begin engaging individuals experiencing homelessness in the downtown business district. Quickly, the department recognized benefits from having a group of officers who work closely with individuals experiencing homelessness. However, it also became apparent this was not just a policing issue, as policing alone did not necessarily impact those not engaging in criminal behaviors or those suffering from medical and mental health issues. Over the past 11 years, our programs have expanded to what they are today. While there have been many council actions, community meetings, and countless efforts by our city and elected officials, I would like to point out a couple events that helped shape our approach. In 2018, the Martin versus Boise ruling was published by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, a case in which, in 2019, the Supreme Court let stand. Martin versus Boise essentially ruled that enforcement of anti-camping and anti-loitering ordinances are unconstitutional because they criminalize homelessness and are only enforceable if alternative sleeping space is available. In 2019, in response to the county's efforts to clean up the San Ana River Channel, the Orange County Catholic workers filed suit against the County of Orange and the cities of Anaheim, Costa Mesa, and Orange, which was ultimately expanded to include 12 additional cities. This case involved allegations of Fourth, Eighth, and Fourteenth Amendment violations, as well as violations of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which led to a settlement agreement establishing a standard of care in Orange County. As municipality, Orange County avoided inclusion in this lawsuit by committing to establishing our own systems within the city of Huntington Beach. In October 2019, the city council held a study session regarding funding availability for the Navigation Center, and on August 3rd of 2020, authorized the city manager to begin operations of 174-bed facility, which opened in December. Following this expansion of services, the city hired a Deputy Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Health Services, and in September of 2021, the Police Department reorganized, which included establishing our Community Outreach Bureau to ensure a single chain of command for the Homeless Task Force with a dedicated supervisor. And lastly, in April of 2022, the city council permitted the city manager to negotiate with Jamboree Housing to explore funding and development of a permanent services center on the site of the current Navigation Center. The first thing I'd like to explore is the overarching problem impacting our nation and disproportionately our state by providing a snapshot of the community we serve. While California represents only 11.6% of our nation's population, our state is home to over 27% of our nation's individuals experiencing homelessness. Within the state of California, Huntington Beach represents just under 1/2 of 1% of the state's total population, and is home to 2/10 of 1% of the homeless population, with a ratio of 16.9 individuals experiencing homelessness per 10,000 residents. To put that into perspective, Humboldt County leads the nation with 125.5 individuals experiencing homelessness per 10,000, while Los Angeles was 10th with 69. Orange County ranks 83rd in the country and 35th in the state with a rate of 22 per 100,000. If we were on par with the county-wide average, we would be expected to have 433 individuals experiencing homelessness. And if we were, if our population was directly correlated to our percentage of state population compared to the population of homeless individuals, we would expect to have over 800 individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. To further expand on our population of individuals experiencing homelessness, I'll be using data from the 2019 and 2022 Point-in-Time Counts. The Point-in-Time Count is a biannual HUD-mandated program required for each continuum of care. The Point-in-Time Count conducted in 2022 recorded 188 unsheltered individuals and 142 sheltered individuals in Huntington Beach. For clarification, unsheltered refers to a person who resides in a place not meant for human habitation, such as cars, parks, sidewalks, abandoned buildings, or on the street. Whereas sheltered refers to homeless persons who reside in an emergency shelter, transitional housing, or supportive housing for homeless persons who originally came from the streets or an emergency shelter. Since the Point-in-Time Count, the number of sheltered individuals has presumably increased, with the Navigation Center now operating at full capacity of 174 beds, along with additional beds available at the HB Oasis Home Key Site. The other cities you'll see listed on this slide represent fall, those falling within the Orange County Healthcare Agency's Central Service Planning Area, or SPA. This is a geographic region designated for tracking, planning, and the coordination of regional services. According to their own website, the county's healthcare agency is charged with protecting and promoting individual, family, and community health through partnership and coordination of public and private sector resources. While there are outliers affecting the Point-in-Time Count, one item to note is that within the Orange County Central SPA, Huntington Beach is the only city who saw a reduction in unsheltered individuals, an increase in sheltered individuals, and an overall decrease in individuals experiencing homelessness between the 2019 and 2022 Point-in-Time Counts. I would also like to point out a typo in there, is that Costa Mesa saw a 37-person reduction in unsheltered individuals instead of an increase.
Lieutenant Smith, so.
Yes.
Just want to jump in. This is, to me, the critical data that we need. So essentially, the Point-in-Time Count of homeless, the homeless population in 2019 was 349 individuals.
Yes, sir.
And then in 2022 was 330. So in terms of like sheltered and unsheltered, I mean, former council member Kim Carr, she repeatedly boasted that from, you know, '19 to '22, HB reduced the unsheltered population by 35%, and she even did so last night. And to me, that's not the true metric to focus on, and it's misleading. You know, unsheltered, as you described, means they are in the Navigation Center, but they're technically still homeless. Center, but they're technically still homeless, and they're utilizing public resources. So I don't feel that's, that's success. I think the true metric we should be looking at is getting people off of the street, out of the Navigation Center, and then into the county services as they navigate through. And so that metric is the Point in Time Count, which dropped from 349 in 19 to 330 in 2022, or 19 individuals, and that equates to 5%, not 35%. So I just want to level set with the community that, in my opinion, I think that's a stat we need to focus on, is how many people are we getting off the street, into the shelter, out of the shelter, then into the county services? Because we have 174 beds in the shelter, and as of this morning, 152 beds were occupied. So we're at an 89% capacity. And so we need to focus on getting them out of the shelter and into the county services so that other individuals can be brought into the shelter. So my question is, like, is there a maximum time that they can be in the shelter?
The contract we have with Mercy House has a 90-day initial period with an additional 90 days permissible, as long as they're making progress. But that is one of the things I'll be looking at and further expand on in our 90-day plan, is how to increase the success rates and to reduce the length of stays of individuals in that program, so that they can move on to permanent supportive housing or other programs that might benefit them more.
Perfect. And just want to clarify the community, because there has been some comments about our 90-day plan. So this is step one, to deconstruct all the services that the city and the county is providing, and then level set and create a baseline that we can look back to as we progress through to make sure we're having measurable success. And we'll come back at another study session at the next meeting with our 90-day plan to combat homelessness with Lieutenant Smith and the police officers help. So I just want to make sure the community is clear on that.
I'm not clear now.
Yeah.
So, that's a net number, right? So the 289 unsheltered, 188 unsheltered, and the 60 sheltered, 142. Those aren't necessarily the same individuals that we counted in 2019 to 2022, because we don't have a name database, correct?
Correct. We do not maintain a name database.
So that's the net result. So there's folks that are coming out of being unsheltered, that got sheltered through some other means, that are not in our shelter per se. They're not homeless anymore. And that's not reflected in this data, correct?
Correct. It's a fluctuating number. It's never consistent.
It's a fungible number, right? So, yeah, the 19 total, but that doesn't account for the folks that came out of the system and tuned into the system. So this is a net number, not the gross number.
Understand.
So I think it's a mischaracterization to state that we need to get folks, there's folks that aren't accounted for in this, right? Because it's a, it's, it's not the gross number of homeless people that came through the system. So I think it's a...
Well, walk, walk me through Point in Time Count then, if our, if our went from 349 to 330. So, I mean, doesn't the county do a Point in Time Count at how many?
Not the same people, though. So more people fell into homelessness?
Sure.
At this point, right?
Right. But I say the goal is to get, to get that number down, that homeless population down, and always have the, you know, the net number obviously increase to getting them off the streets.
Sure, but I think it's, it's a mischaracterization to say we only decreased by five. We decreased net homelessness by five. I'll give you that.
Well, that's, to me, the ultimate goal is, is net, right?
Sure, but you've still got people falling into homelessness. So I think you've got to turn the spigot off on one end before you claim that the other end that you plug the drain.
I think 35 to 5% is a huge delta, so I think we should focus on net, taking into account what you're talking about. But I think that's also a very misleading stat she keeps saying about, we've reduced by 35%.
Well, I think she specifically stated, we reduced the unsheltered homelessness population, which is completely...
But they fall out, and they come back in, and they fall out.
Which is, but it's accurate, though.
Well, again, we're looking at the net number, right? They go in, they come...
You are.
Well, I, I think that's...
I'm saying that you're, you're, you're making statements about other folks that are making positively fact-based statements.
Okay.
And I think mischaracterizing some of this data here is, this is the net data. So we still have people falling into homelessness, and we need to fix that problem, right?
Sure.
I mean, there's folks that said, we just had our presentation on CDBG dollars, which should help folks fall, falling into homelessness, but we need to...
But like, like anything in business, right, you focus on the net number. So I, I understand that the gross number fluctuates, but net, we want to have a net positive result each year looking back.
No one's arguing, no point.
It is difficult to quantify the impact homelessness has on a community, as its impacts are not just the individuals experiencing homelessness, but also the community in a variety of ways. Over the years, there have been studies on the cost associated with the overall impact to homeless, homelessness. Over a 12-month period spanning 2014 and 2015, researchers from UCR Vine estimated $299 million was spent countywide addressing homelessness. This included over $23 million related to criminal justice contacts, such as policing, custody, and judicial operations, while another $121 million was spent by the healthcare industry. The report estimated the average annual cost per individual experiencing homelessness to be $45,000 per year for these services, which, if multiplied by the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in Huntington Beach, that would equate to an impact of nearly $15 million, or, in today's economy, 19 million.
So Lieutenant Smith, can you kind of expand on that a little bit? Because that's obviously a, a big number to, to people. So what does that really mean? That's not necessarily what Huntington Beach is paying, but the cost to us of our services and impact and our hospitals, et cetera, right?
Correct. What the researchers did is they went around and interviewed hundreds of homeless individuals, and they kind of followed through the programs and got an S, an approximate cost of all those services, and multiplied it by the total known number of homeless individuals. And that ranged from, the average was 45,000, and upwards of 100,000 for chronically homeless individuals, as far as the cost it is to maintain those systems between policing, hospital, community resources, things like that, not specifically the city of Huntington Beach. While it is difficult to compile a complete list of all services available to those experiencing homelessness, or those at risk of experiencing homelessness, I have created a list of several we frequently work with, and I apologize to anybody I left off of here. As municipality, we provide dedicated police homeless task force staffing, social workers, BE WELL Mobile Crisis Response, the Navigation Center operated by Mercy House, HB Care's Volunteer Program, and tenant-based rental assistance. Additionally, we have the Huntington Beach Youth Shelter, operated by Waymakers, who provides shelter and emergency care for, emergency shelter for runaway homeless, abused, and at-risk youths. Within the county, there are two regular county-funded shelters and an emergency seasonal cold weather shelter, in addition to six former motel sites being converted into permanent supportive housing, including our own Huntington Beach Oasis Site, three in Stanton, one in Anaheim, and one in Costa Mesa. Several Orange County municipalities have their own shelters or navigation centers, either built or in the process of being constructed, including Buena Park and Placentia, who will host North County shelters, Costa Mesa, who also supports Newport Beach efforts, Garden Grove, who will host a facility with the cities of Westminster and Fountain Valley, along with cities of Fullerton, San Ana, Tustin, Anaheim, and Laguna Beach. Within our own community, we have tremendous support, including from our long-term partner Coast to Coast Foundation, who raises funds, provides outreach, and assists us in many ways, including helping individuals reunite with family members and support networks outside the area.
Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
Which services on here do we duplicate that the county performs or should be performing?
So, some of them we duplicate, such as our, our social workers and BE WELL that somewhat covered by Orange County Healthcare Agencies by their PERT teams. However, we would have to, we share those resources within the county, which means we don't get the immediate response time we do, or the level of care and follow-up for our community members that we would get from having our own resources.
Okay, so it's more quality control that, if we control the process?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I say something really quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say that it's not duplicative to have BE WELL in the county team, because they do do different things, and they were very clear with one another, or BE WELL wouldn't be able to be doing what they're doing.
Yes. I should say there are more supportive programs that overlap and also overlap with each other's missions.
Okay, great. And then, as Councilmember McKean said, they do really provide us with more quality control, local control, and the ability to get to people more quickly.
Yes. And for me, having that, those resources to do that long-term follow-up, and not just getting an on-call person or who have multiple cases, that they can really do that focused care to our community members.
And I know I spoke with one of our caseworkers this last week, actually at the Council on Aging presentation with the seniors who spoke, and she had mentioned that in past positions that she was in outside of Huntington Beach, where they were relying on the county, that when they, when she would get home at night, she would be kind of depressed, because essentially she would not be able to figure out how she was going to really help people, because it took a long time and the resources were not as, as at the ready, I guess. So she was really supportive of all of the work that's been done here, because we have access to so many services. Thank you.
Yes. And another recent change to some of the systems is the Yale Navigation Center. Used to allow walk-ups and referrals from officers, and they recently changed it to where now they have to accept entry through the coordinated entry system too, which does, again, slow down the, the processes, but helps control what services are being provided. The funding sources, the city has identified and utilized several funding sources to minimize the impact of homeless services on our city's general funds. This comes via city, county, state, and federal funding sources. From the city funding sources, we use low and moderate income housing asset funds, also referred to as LEMI half. This fund was established in 2011 to conduct the dissolution of operations related to housing assets and activities of our former redevelopment agency. Revenue from this is generated from repayments of affordable housing development loans. Have our infrastructure fund, which the city charter requires 15% of our funds, general funds, be transferred into an infrastructure fund for improvements and maintenance. Police Department Impact Funds, general funds, and in several of these parts, you will see CARES Act grant funding, which we received allocations from the county, state, and federal CARES Act grants. The CARES Act stands for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act Grant, which was a $2 trillion federal package that included $150 billion for coronavirus relief funds to assist state and local governments to address public health and the economic impacts of COVID-19. The county allocated $1.7 million to the city to pay for unbudgeted expenditures incurred related to our COVID-19 response, and an additional $3 million was provided to the city to build out cost for the sprung structure site for our COVID homeless response.
Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
When you say sprung structure, obviously you mean the, the Navigation Center.
Yes.
Just want to...
The temporary structure that currently houses.
And then, I know this is a, a big topic for the, the residents, so I'd like to ask that these financials be posted online, so that the residents can see the accounting of these funds?
Yes, sir.
Possible to break down. And then I'd like a better detail of, you know, how much we are spending, spending normally without these stimulus funds, because they are expiring. So essentially, like, what are we receiving each year normally, and then how much we are spending? So just take out all the, all the stimulus money that's obviously expiring, if that's possible.
And can I add to that? You know, I know there's a lot of restricted funds that are there as well, and with our discussions about housing and the potential of not having a certified housing element, I would also like to include which funding resources or sources that are there that will be potentially not there for us if we don't have a certified housing element.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next is the CBDG CARES Act entitlement funding, which was $2 billion allocated under the Community Development Block Grant Program to aid guarantees in the preparation, prevention, and response to the pandemic. In 2020, Huntington Beach was notified that its total share of CARES Act funding would be just over $2.1 million. We also use SB2 Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funding, which was from a bill signed in 2017 to address the state's housing shortage in high housing cost areas. This funding, the SB2 funding, is dependent on our housing element being certified. We also received approximately, or $500,000 from a Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse, and Mental Health Services Administration grant sponsored by Senator Feinstein, and a Department of Healthcare Services grant sponsored by Assemblywoman Cadi Petri Norris, which came to $1.5 million. We also received FEMA Public Assistance Grant, and lastly, Federal Home ARPA Grant, American Rescue Plan Act Grant, which the city was allocated $2.2 million for eligible activities that provide housing services and shelter to primarily benefit qualifying individuals who are homeless, at risk of being homeless, or in other vulnerable populations. As we continue, I'll break down how each source was utilized. While the city has designated resources assigned to our homeless task force, I'd be remiss to not mention those who support our efforts directly and indirectly, that being our partners in the city manager's office, city attorney's office, city council, fire department, public works, community library services, code enforcement, finance department, and information service. Our homeless task force does not just serve those experiencing homelessness, rather, they serve our entire community. The city's homeless task force, designated task force, is comprised of the Police Department Homeless Task Force Officers, Department of Homeless and Behavioral Health Services, along with the Huntington Beach Navigation Center, operated by Mercy House, and our BE WELL Mobile Crisis Response Teams. The various components of our local system of care are designed to work cooperatively with overlapping services to give the best chance of success to those who are receiving, are, we are serving, with the ultimate goal of housing stabilization. This begins by examining barriers people are facing that either led them to being homeless or are placing them in a position of being at risk of being homeless, and then exploring how to overcome these barriers. This process is unique to each individual we work with, and no single blanket process could adequately, quickly address each person's needs. We must also recognize that some choose to live a nomad lifestyle, and there is no constitutional or legal mandates requiring persons to be housed. But for those who are facing barriers, housing stabilization is achieved either individually or via the Orange County Coordinated Entry System. While the county has a system of care, in my opinion, there are insufficient governmental resources at the county level to assist the needs of all persons residing within the 34 cities in Orange County 24/7. Besides the coordinated entry system, the common county resources we utilize is the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team, which provides clinicians to assist in behavioral health crises. The county also provides Huntington Beach with one homeless outreach team worker one day per week, who work closely with our homeless task force, and a psychiatric emergency response team clinician who rides along with our police officers once a week. While we work cooperatively with the county, having our own system of care reduces delays by ensuring we have dedicated staff on hand to assist our community. Delays in receiving assistance from county programs not only impacts the community members needing assistance, but also places a strain on our public safety resources, who, absent our own system of care, would be the only ones available to assist our community in the interim, thus keeping our public safety resources available.
Officer Smith?
Yes.
Could you identify some of the, describe some of the barriers, what would prevent some of the people from looking for this help or reaching it?
So, as I said, it's all up to individually based, but income is a huge one, just finding the ability to make ends meet. Legal is everything from civil legal action to criminal processes, which sometimes burdens people and makes it difficult for them to get on their feet when they constantly have warrants hanging over their heads or convictions, you know, things just impacting their ability to, to get jobs. Substance abuse and mental health is one that gets a lot of attention, because those, those systems are, are lacking frankly, to get people connected to community-based resources. And then, you know, other assistance, a lot of it's just...
Lieutenant, I'm sure you don't know this answer, but when you talk about mental health and we talk about resources, the state has a, a huge deficit. Are we getting any indication from any of the folks in Sacramento of what kind of that will look like after the budget?
No, sir. I've not heard anything on that.
Lieutenant Smith, just on the, on the barriers, is there data to have a percentage on, on each one of these categories on, like roughly on the, you know, homeless population? Which percentage is in these, in these said categories? Is that, is that data available?
Is there a formal assessment?
Yeah.
So, people are assessed as they come into our programs, and it's based upon their responses. So I don't have that data with me, but it's something we can look into.
And I think it's important to note, too, that this is intersectional, where people experience many of these things oftentimes, and one thing often leads to another as well.
Yeah, it'd be good just to know that. Obviously, the root problem, this is what we're trying to address, so it'd be good to understand the breakdown, and if it's, like you said, they're overlapping, if that's, if that data exists, which I hope it does.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Our Police Department's homeless task force officers are very involved in our community. They provide the city with specialized service based upon a strong understanding of available resources and current laws and regulations to ensure we do not interfere with anyone's constitutionally protected rights. In 2022, the Police Department handled over 8,800 calls involving individuals experiencing homelessness, or 7.78% of all calls. This is close to what our counterparts are at the Fire Department are seeing, which shows about 8% of their calls are involving individuals experiencing homelessness. I must add that in no way am I insinuating that just because a person is homeless, they are generating calls for service. Based upon my experience, I would offer that a significant portion of our homeless population do not generate any calls for service for the Police Department. Our homeless task force officers are a dedicated group of officers who are tasked with engaging our homeless community and the community impacted by homelessness. These officers attend a homeless liaison officer course, and they have also attended an additional 24 hours of additional crisis intervention training, which includes techniques for approaching mentally ill, such as identifying suicide risk factors, cultural issues, effective communications, and de-escalation techniques. To prevent errors from occurring, our homeless task force officers are the only ones who take enforcement... take enforcement action for illegal camping and storage of property in public. This not only protects those experiencing homelessness and their rights, but it also protects the city from liability. One of the most time-consuming but required tasks our officers deal with is property inventory and storage. Our officers are responsible for all property they come to be in possession of. While some may view an encampment as filled with trash, it is still someone's property. When a person is taken into custody or placed in a shelter, or when we investigate abandoned or unattended property, the officers are required to inventory and book each item unless it's soiled, saturated, contaminated, or infested, which can be an arduous, time-consuming task. During our initial presentation, there were some questions regarding the need for trucks. Our officers use these trucks to transport property that may otherwise damage the interior of patrol vehicles or that would take multiple vehicles to transport. In addition to the homeless task force-related tasks, our officers must be able to respond to emergencies at all times within our community. Emergency responses that may include high-speed driving tactics, and it would be extremely hazardous to the community and our officers to not provide them with the equipment to respond to these calls. One of the most important statistics, and one of the things I'm most proud of, is out of the 3,588 contacts our homeless task force officers made in 2022, none of these contacts resulted in reportable use of force, which is a testament to each officer, the department, and our city as a whole.
Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
From the 481 referrals to the Navigation Center, do we know how many actually made it to transitional housing?
So, I do not have that number. And so, that referrals is referrals. It doesn't necessarily mean everybody that took a referral showed up. We encounter a lot of individuals on the streets who may want to try to gather their belongings or do other acts before going into the Navigation Center. So, there's several times where they do not show up to follow up through on those, but we still make the referral so that that bed space is available for them.
Thank you.
I wanted to just also acknowledge what you just said about the officers. Having, you know, zero instances of force is very important, and it should be commended. So, I thank you, and I thank all of the team for doing that, because, you know, people experiencing homelessness are very vulnerable, and those situations can escalate maybe more so, more quickly than others, and so I just wanted to say thank you, and also commend the city in general for that.
Yeah, that's great.
Prior to 2021, nearly all the responsibilities for managing homeless and behavioral health services fell under the police department. During that time, the case managers, now called social workers, worked out of the police department and under the supervision of various police managers and supervisor. The Table of Organization for Homelessness and Behavioral Services allows for one director, a social services supervisor, two social workers, and one part-time social worker, and a volunteer services coordinator. Before you is a list of general duties related to each assignment, but I'd like to point out the roles of our volunteer services coordinator, who assists with both coordinating volunteer services as well as administrative and analytical tasks. She assists by coordinating various city resources, as well as the various community-based groups, to help ensure resources are being used to the best benefit of the community we serve. We recently trained our first 12 volunteers, whose roles will expand as the program develops to include community outreach and other tasks, freeing up staff to focus on providing services. Initially, these volunteers will screen voicemails and emails, make callbacks to those that have reached out for our services. The volunteers are screened and completed background check and complete training, allowing them to assist inside the police department and city hall facilities, similar to our existing VIP and RSVP volunteer programs. The only costs for this program will be for the volunteer services coordinator spot, the salary, and a minimal cost for t-shirts to ensure our volunteers are identifiable.
Lieutenant Smith, real quick, so just to be clear, so we're just fully staffed as one filled position, right, for the coordinator?
Yes.
And on the other side, so one social service supervisor, and then one part-time social worker, correct?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and currently, the only positions that are filled is the social worker, which are, the two positions are filled, and the volunteer services coordinator. We're vacant at the director position, the supervisor position, and the part-time position.
I noted that you have, for the volunteer services coordinator position, the data generating reports and conducting research, and I think that that's a great part in use of that position's efforts. One thing that I would add is I do think that we need better data management systems and analysis as we move forward. In my mind, I actually think that there might be an opportunity to add somebody here. Perhaps they could work in multiple areas, I'm not sure, but, you know, there's an opportunity to have more quality by-name data that we don't presently have. That would also require having somebody that could work and advocate with the county as well to get better access to the HMIS data, which is, the county doesn't like to give up. So, we definitely need, I think, a push there. And, yeah, that was my main thing. I do also appreciate, you know, the fact that we got the social workers filled the end of last year was, I know it took quite a while to be able to get people for many reasons, but one of those was because of the background checks that were required. So, I wanted to acknowledge the shift that was made to be able to kind of lessen or diminish that a little bit, to be able to help get more people who are interested and experienced into these positions, because if we have them vacant, they can't help anybody. So, I'm very excited about the folks that are in there now, and look forward to filling those additional positions.
I am as well.
And Lieutenant Smith, I'd like to also look into, like, whether, we actually, I don't believe you do, but I'll defer to you, like, a director of the homelessness services, behavioral health, I mean, like, as we all know, on January 17th, I had a lot of questions for Jason Austin at that time, and then the next day, he resigns. And so did Misty Ashby, who, you know, ran the Navigation Center for Mercy House. So, you've done an amazing job. I don't think the community knows how much time you've spent digging into this. And so, I'm hopeful we don't need a director of homelessness. I'm not saying that that person should be you, but you really, like, taking control of this and are really becoming an expert. So, that's just something to think about, because I think he was over $230,000, like, you know, with full benefits, so that's just something to think about.
Yeah, that's one of the things we're going to evaluate as we move forward, is the positions that we need, and that's something I'll be doing with the city manager's office and you as a council, to evaluate what the needs are in future staffing levels. And there's obviously a significant gap going from myself to social workers, which is an immediate field I'll be discussing with you in the near future.
I wanted to acknowledge the vacancy of Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Health Services as well, and before I do that, I also wanted to commend you. You know, Lieutenant, you have really gone after all of this, gathered everything, and really gotten such a hold on this entire system of care that has been created over the last year or two in the city of Huntington Beach. I would say that, as many on this council have said as well, homelessness is one of the highest and most important issues to all of our residents. When you have a system of care, it requires, as I know you know, so many different knowledge bases, sets of experience, and as the most important, one of the most important issues in our community, I think that it's really important that we have a high level of executive leadership and that we invest in that. And by the way, I think, again, you're doing a great job, but I do think that it is likely, in my opinion, at a director level, that's required. That being said, too, I don't like the fact that, I believe that we're kind of insinuating that our previous director quit as a result of questions being asked. I think that it's important to state that Jason Austin did a phenomenal job here in the city of Huntington Beach, having worked with him very closely on everything. He brought all of his knowledge and experience from the county, things that, you know, it's, most people wouldn't have access to as far as just where things are and how to connect to them. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, we really haven't had a chance to acknowledge the efforts that he contributed to our city, and I think that they're very impressive, and I just really want to make sure that we acknowledge that he didn't leave as a result of difficult questions. I know he'd be ready to answer those, but he left as a result of an opportunity. So, thank you.
On to funding for the city employee staffing. Funds for the initial homeless task force officers and case managers were funded through LEMI-Half funds, the bulk of which monies were received prior to the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. We've now spent a majority of the balance, with a large portion spent on the acquisition of the Navigation Center properties and the commitment to Project Home Key, which I will discuss later. Moving forward, revenues from LEMI-Half funding will only come from loan repayments, and those are insufficient to cover staffing cost. We anticipate budget revenues of $200,000 for fiscal year '22, '23, which is why personnel costs have been transitioned to being funded from general funds. Previously, the question was asked regarding stark difference in outreach numbers between 2020 and 2021. During those years, the COVID years, due to restrictions and concerns over the seriousness of COVID, our outreach efforts were impacted, resulting in lower numbers. Additionally, we only counted face contacts as being outreach, whereas last year, we began including telephonic outreach efforts toward those numbers to more accurately reflect what our team is engaged in. Tracking and data collection has been an evolving process to ensure we are collecting data and protecting that data in a lawful manner, which varies between involved groups. For instance, the police department can only collect such information as related to criminal behavior or suspected criminal behavior, whereas the other elements have to worry about privacy data HIPAA and can collect different information. Additionally, during the period of notable increase, we brought in a director of homelessness and behavioral health, and within the police department, we completed our reorganization. Having additional support, supervision, and managerial personnel dedicated to these programs helps remove administrative workload from officers and our social workers, who then can focus on outreach and engagement.
Officer?
Yes.
I have a question. Sorry, should have caught you sooner. So, I know we discussed this earlier, but for those watching, if you can explain why the amount spent on sworn officers increased even though the FTEs remains the same, and also, how did our contact outreach double? Why did it double?
Okay, so, on the sworn positions, you'll see it says the 5.8 FTE. That's also, we broke down those who were assisting with our homeless outreach and engagement efforts, which included a sergeant, the four officers, and then the .8 represents the lieutenant, at that time Lieutenant Dave Derzinski, who was managing our traffic bureau and also supervising and coordinating development of the Navigation Center and overseeing those operations. So, that's where the 5.8 comes from, and then it drops down to 5.5 is after our reorganization, where my current position under the Community Outreach Bureau, approximately half my time is spent dealing with homeless issues, while the other half is spent on school resource officers, downtown area command, and other police-related issues. The increase from year to year can also be attributed to contract cost and other raises, things like that. The numbers, again, goes back to some of the changes in our data tracking and how we are tracking that data to get more accurate information and to compile it in a way that is useful. So, that's kind of the primary for those numbers, and then that our personnel are able to focus on the outreach, street outreach and engagement, which has been a focus of myself and Director Austin when he was here.
Thank you.
Now, on to our BWO Mobile Crisis Response Program. BWO in Orange County operates using funding from public and private funding sources, including the county of Orange, the parent company. The city of Huntington Beach contracts with BWO to staff mobile crisis response teams that serve our entire community, regardless of age, income, location, health insurance status, or any other factors. This team provides crisis response for triage mental health calls, as well as proactive outreach throughout our community, including into our schools, local businesses, residential settings, our jail facility, and within the Navigation Center. While this program is not specific for a community of individuals experiencing homelessness, they have filled a void that existed in our continuum of care, which has included working with our homeless community. Prior to establishing our mobile crisis response team, we had limited options of addressing issues involving mental health or substance abuse, which, on a local level, was limited to police and fire personnel's involvement, with really only four outcomes. We could walk away from the situation, leaving without any resources. If a criminal offense was committed, we could arrest them and then attempt to seek care through Orange County Jail's mental health, through the county's crisis response teams, or we could cite and release them without any assistance and push them back out on the streets again. And each individual booking cost us approximately $600 per person booked. We could also transport them to medical facilities, either voluntarily or involuntarily, or request assistance from the Orange County Healthcare Agency. Each of those options requires a significant commitment from our public safety resources to either conduct the transports or to stand by for county facilities to come and do the transports for us. BWO is able to assist in many of those circumstances by providing crisis response, follow-up services, case management, and access to sobering and detoxification facilities. While I'm showing you the cost for the entire BWO program, 59% of BWO's calls involved individuals experiencing homelessness. This does not mean 59% of the time or money was spent on engaging homelessness, but just 59% of their calls. This is important to our overall approach regarding homelessness because, in general nationwide, it is estimated over one quarter of individuals experiencing homelessness suffer from severe mental illness, while a significant percentage are either drug or alcohol dependent. BWO provides us with another option, a chance to make a change, a chance for success, another approach outside the realm of public safety. In the analysis provided to the city council in 2021, it was estimated the police department spends the equivalent of two full-time police officers handling calls related to mental wellness. Since August of 2021, BWO has had two staff members available for response in our community for a total of nearly 8,000 hours, or 16,000 personnel hours. In one year, this is equivalent to over seven full-time staff at a significant savings, while helping to ensure our first responders are available for emergency response and proactive work. When fully staffed, BWO will provide 21-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week coverage. Currently, they provide coverage on the schedule shown up there with the two vans scheduled, Sunday through Wednesday, 10:00 to 10:00, Thursday through Saturday, 6:00 AM till 3:00 AM. And just an anecdotal story of a great example of the services they provide was from our log on February 23rd while I was preparing this presentation. The very first logger into the day was the HOPE van, the BWO van, assisting elderly resident who was in a moment of personal crisis. Later that shift, they responded to the Main Street Library regarding an individual creating a disturbance. They learned the subject is homeless, has no ties to Huntington Beach, and traveled here from the East Coast. Ultimately, they transported the individual to the Cold Weather Shelter in Fullerton. Later that shift, they assisted the police department by transporting an intoxicated homeless male to the BWO Sobering Center, where he received medical treatment and will be linked up to other supportive services, with the only cost incurred to the city being our mobile crisis response team, at an approximate cost of $156 for the two hours of time those two team members spent with that individual. In the upcoming fiscal year, this program will be funded 100% by grant funding. And just briefly to show you how they're being utilized, I included these graphics. As mentioned, if they're not actively engaged in calls for service or follow-up, they are proactively patrolling hotspots where our homeless community tends to congregate in engaging them.
So, Lieutenant Smith, just to clarify, so, '23 and '24 will be fully funded by the state? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's big. So, like, what, I know you mentioned, but like, what's in your mind, like, the percentage of how much they take off your guys' workload to allow you to focus on public safety in the community, would you say?
It is significant.
Okay.
I don't know if I can, you can't necessarily do one-for-one on the calls for services, because the services they provide are much more than what an officer could provide.
Sure.
But like I said, for that one two-hour transport to the Sobering Center, not only did it get somebody off the street, it didn't put them back into that endless loop of going to jail on the streets, and it kept our officers available while they did the transport, which takes, on average, two hours to transport up to the facility in Orange, get them entered, accepted in the facility, and then to drive back to our city and become available.
That's great. Well, the community has a lot of questions about what they do, so it's good to understand how important they are and how vital they are to you guys.
Yes, a huge asset from the police department perspective.
And then Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
One more thing on BWO. So, BWO, they become engaged through dispatch? Is that correct, or how does that work?
So, there's two ways for them to become engaged with individuals, either through proactive outreach, which does happen more and more where they're flagged down by community members just needing assistance, or through triage calls for service through our police communication center, where the communications operators will speak to the caller, evaluate the case, and then try to identify the best resource for a response, whether it's police, fire, BWO, or a joint response.
Thank you. So, if, let's say, anybody sees someone that might benefit from BWO, is there a number they call besides the police, or do you recommend they go through the police?
All calls should come through the police department, so, again, that we can triage it. Initially, we had different phone lines set up for the different resources. However, that was one of the changes I made when I took over my position, was going to a single resource, because we shouldn't expect the community to have to triage and go through a phone tree, one person, one call, and let us figure out the best resources available.
Can you provide that number that residents should call?
Yes, it's just our dispatch non-emergency, which is area code 714-960-8825. And please do not be alarmed if they answer police communications, that is the appropriate facility to call to get assistance.
Can you walk them through, too, while you're talking about the homeless dispatch number, just, you know, instructions that they should report? number, just, you know, instructions that they should report suspicious behavior, be a witness to all those things that help you guys going forward?
Right now, would you like me to cover that, or?
No, yeah, just mention it real quick.
Yeah, it's, we need the community's eyes and ears out there. You know what's best and what's quote-unquote "normal" in an area. If you see something suspicious, something that causes you to pause or hesitate, call us and report it and let us know. We see a lot now, people are going on social media, online, or doing the MyHB request, which is great to get information out there, but for us to be able to respond, we need that extra information. And we just ask that the community focuses on the behavior, not necessarily the individual doing it, but focus on what behavior they are engaged in that's leading you to be suspicious. And again, you can just call our police dispatch number, provide them with what you're seeing, and they will figure out what the best resource is. And if it is a crime in progress or a life and death emergency, 911. All 911 calls in the city of Huntington Beach first come through our police communications center, and then get referred out to where they're supposed to go. So the quickest and easiest way is just call our dispatch. Onto the navigation center. One of the most talked-about elements in our continuum of care is the Huntington Beach Navigation Center, operated through a contract with Mercy House. The navigation center is an element to help connect those experiencing homelessness with the foundation to move on to long-term programs. The site can house 174 individuals and is currently 89% filled. This facility is staffed by a minimum of three security staff and Mercy House staff at all times. It's a low-barrier shelter, however, access is restricted to those with significant ties to Huntington Beach only after receiving a referral from either our social workers or homeless task force. This is done to help ensure the clients meet the minimum requirements for entry. The facility's contract requires they operate under a good neighbor policy, meaning clients cannot walk or ride from the location in hopes of reducing loitering. Their security also conducts rounds both inside and outside the facility to ensure there's minimal impact on the surrounding community. From December 2020 through November 2022, the county reduced the center's bed capacity and/or issued lockdowns due to COVID-19. In 2022 alone, the center was closed for intakes 20% of the time. On December 6th, 2022, the county lifted those restrictions and restored our capacity back to 174 beds. And again, as of today, we are 89% full.
Lieutenant Smith, real quick?
Yes.
A lot of frustration in the community that they don't understand why they can't, if somebody needs help, take them to the navigation center. You mentioned being a good neighbor policy. Can you explain that and then proper protocol?
So some of our concerns initially when it was starting up was if people were able to walk up, that there'd be lines of individuals experiencing homelessness and people loitering in the community, just waiting for assistance. That creates a negative image and can impact the surrounding communities, we're aware of that. But we also have to do an intake and screening of all individuals going in there to make sure it's the appropriate facility for everybody, because a low-barrier shelter may not be the best. It could be where they need supportive care, medical care, or other specialized services that may best be served elsewhere. And so that's where, as part of our intake, we try to identify those barriers again and the needs of the individual to help connect them to the best process.
And I know that you'll touch on on the last slide, but proper intake is at the police station, correct?
Correct. So it can either be in the field by the officers or at the police department lobby. We have office hours twice a week, that I'll cover in the, at the final slide, as you said. On average, it takes Mercy House staff 175 days to get an individual placed into permanent housing and 109 days to get someone placed into temporary housing. One of my goals is to bring this average length of stay and the time for placement closer to each other, so we can increase their success rates of getting individuals housed. To identify issues that may impact the surrounding community, I personally audit all calls for service at the navigation center and provide Chief Para with a monthly summary. We do this to hopefully be proactive and identify any potential areas that could future or further impact the surrounding communities. Between December 2020 and December 2022, we provided services to 504 unduplicated individuals. While our point-in-time count was 330, that was just a snapshot of that particular day. The needs for service varies and is not a static number, so the need for service, again, varies. While 162 have been housed out of the navigation center by Mercy House and city staff, some have also found success on their own. To assist individuals in gaining employment, the navigation center works with the Chrisless Program, a nonprofit, to help individuals transition back into the workforce. Out of 54 who held employment, six gained employment while at the navigation center. I can actually update that because another one recently gained employment and housing as of last week. This does not take into account those who may be receiving social security income or disability benefits. Since 2020, three individuals have passed away inside of the facility. We're still waiting on the autopsy results on the final two, which I checked on those again last week, and they're still pending. The first one was ruled natural, while the remaining two are still pending. Following these deaths, Mercy House brought in counselors and B-Well to assist their staff and those individuals impacted by that. While we take steps to prevent drugs from entering the facility, individuals with addictions will go to extreme lengths to conceal contraband. Staff searches each client when they return to the navigation center, and if they do not consent to a search, they are not allowed to enter the facility. If someone is found to be in possession of narcotics or paraphernalia inside the facility, the matter is handled as a disciplinary issue, which could result in exit from the program 14 or 30 days, depending on the severity and/or existence of a behavioral contract. One thing we are working on, that I've worked out with B-Well and Mercy House staff, is for individuals in the future that are found under the influence of alcohol or intoxicants and at risk of being exited, instead of exiting to the street, one of the opportunities we're going to give them is a chance to go to the B-Well Sobering Campus, and their bed will be held inside the navigation center for 90 days. So again, just another supportive measure to help protect them and protect our community. All items are collected in amnesty bin or by staff, or collective officers once a month and disposed of in according to policy and law. If we receive information regarding narcotics use within the facility, we will investigate it criminally. In addition to the basic shelter and personal care facilities, clients have access to Alcoholics Anonymous meetings twice a week, OC rescue mission, access to prevention advocacy and intervention treatment, Department of Motor Vehicles, vital records, Lighthouse Recovery, Notary Services, I Clinic, and SOS Medical Van. The services provided are, again, another issue that I'm going to be focusing on in my review of their programs. We operate the navigation center of a cost of $44 per night, per bed, per night, which comes out to $15,982 per year. To put that in perspective, another city I recently met with is paying $50,000 per bed per year, or nearly $137 per bed night. And sorry, I went ahead, one extra. There we go. As you can see, a majority of these expenses are covered by restricted funds, including the $13 million spent on preparing the navigation site, most of which came from restricted funds. I would like to point out one increase in site preparation and structure fees from the previous presentation in January, which is due to the addition of an invoice for shelter beds that came in late and was not included in the original PowerPoint in January. The land acquisition costs are from a LEMI-Half grant, which if not utilized for their intended purposes, a permanent supportive housing site will be repaid. This account cannot retain excessive surplus funds, so any funds in excess of the surplus limits would need to be returned to the state. Our goal is to transition the site into permanent supportive housing within five years, which is the common timeframe to complete projects using LEMI-Half funds. Building a permanent facility will also mitigate the anticipated increasing maintenance cost of maintaining a temporary structure, which we're currently doing. Any questions about this?
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
And you might be talking about it in a minute. But, so, since there is a time limit, basically, that we're under with this, what year was the land purchased?
Yeah, that one, it was...
2020.
2020. Thank you, sorry.
Sure. So we are five years out, basically, and we're in 23 right now, so we have two years, essentially, until that timeline expires. And I know that you mentioned the permanent supportive housing, or essentially affordable housing that needs to be on the site, and this is the same site that we're looking at, the permanent shelter, to be as part of that, as the healing center. And I do think that that might be coming up, or maybe you already just discussed it?
Yes, no, I wasn't going into that in depth because we're looking at what we've done so far. I think that is a future...
I think it was part of the timeline in the beginning.
Yes. So yeah, that is something going forward with jamboree housing that's being looked at.
Great, thank you.
The Huntington Beach Oasis Room Key Site was, started back on December 1st of 2021, when the city council met and authorized collaboration with the county of Orange and American Family Housing to submit an application for the Home Key Program Grant Funding Initiative. On February 17th, 2022, the county of Orange received $17 million in a grant to purchase the underperforming Quality Insight on Beach Boulevard. On June 7th, 2022, the council authorized execution of an Affordable Housing Loan Agreement between the Housing Authority, American Family Housing, and National Community Renaissance of California for the HB Home Key Oasis Site, to include future funding agreement between the city and county of Orange for homeless prevention and supportive services. Being this is a county project, it is open to individuals in the coordinated entry system from the entire central spa. However, upon opening, we were able to secure 16 rooms for individuals experiencing homelessness with significant ties to Huntington Beach. The city allocated $2.4 million in restricted LEMI-Half funds for renovations, as well as $1.81 million from restricted home ARPA funding to support fifth-year supportive cost. However, this project is moving along fast, and we anticipate the transition to permanent supportive housing within the next year. Therefore, the use of home ARPA funds may not be needed. Additionally, none of the funds allocated have been drawn from, and if unused, they can be utilized for the navigation center or other affordable housing projects in our community.
So a quick question on that, just to clarify, so there's 62 units in there?
Yes.
And 16 are specific to Huntington Beach individuals?
They were, 16 were initially given to individuals with significant ties to Huntington Beach.
What is it now, same?
I'm not sure. If you don't have that data, I'd have to ask American Family Housing and the county for that.
And otherwise, like you said, the county from the spa area can bring in any individual into that facility?
Correct. Typically, any facility or programs that are operated out of the spa from the county will include everybody within that list of cities on the second slide.
Okay. It'd be good to understand what's, you know, is dedicated to residents with ties to Huntington Beach or individuals.
Yes.
Do we have any information on upcoming rounds of funding for Project Home Key? That probably would be Ursa or community development. Maybe we can get that later.
Yeah, I'll have to get that for you later.
That'd be great, because I think that Councilmember McKeon brings up a good point with regards to the number of dedicated rooms. I don't believe that that's actually possible to get a specific number, because it is a county resource, but I know that we were really working with them with the coordinated entry system to try to get as many people in Huntington Beach as possible.
The city has made a significant commitment to each and every resident, housed and unhoused, every vigilante and every business, by taking steps to reduce the impact of homelessness. I can only imagine where we would be if none of these resources were in place, but everything comes with a cost, including if we did nothing. A majority of operational funds to support our programs are from restricted funds. If you look at the anticipated general fund expenditures from the current fiscal year, it will cost approximately $2.5 million, or just under $13 per resident per year, to provide supportive services to each and every person and help maintain quality of life within our community. If the community has questions about services and statistics regarding our efforts, they can visit HBHomelessSolutions.com, which we will be adding additional information to in the near future. So in closing, I'd like to answer one question I get asked a lot. What does success look like? Success is having a system in place to assist someone who becomes homeless, so it is rare, brief, and non-recurring. These images demonstrate success for an individual. Taken in 2014, the area Beach and Talbert, this male in this image is whom I give credit to for where we're at today. From 2012 to 2015, I regularly engaged him as an officer, but over time, I learned his story. Through outreach, community support, and support from his family, the image on the right is where he is now: healthy, housed, married, and gainfully employed. These images demonstrate the impact or what success is for our community. These images, specifically of Harriet Weider Park, show an example of how our combined efforts, including with the assistance of the county of Orange, we can improve our parks and community spaces, mitigating risk for fires and pollution, and improving a sense of public safety. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with a review of our services. This final slide is to provide our community with information on how to connect individuals to services. While the navigation center is for those with significant local ties, our homeless task force team will assist anyone experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness.
Lieutenant Smith, just real quick, can you explain further about the connection to the city and how important that is and why it's required, et cetera?
So having a foundation for support is very important for those that need assistance coming out of experiencing homelessness. So it's good to have that connection to the area where you are receiving services, so that they have resources and a knowledge of the area. It also prevents, what we've seen in the news in the past, of cities pushing problems out rather than assisting those in their own communities, and just trying to push the problem away to another jurisdiction. That doesn't work and only creates more problems and does not help the individual at all. And we want to ensure these resources are in place for our community, because at any time, any member of our community could become homeless or become at risk of homelessness, and we want to make sure to have appropriate facilities in place and resources to help them.
Perfect. And like I said before, if proper intake is done and they don't have connections to the city, you guys can still facilitate to get them to the proper services, whether it's to the county, et cetera, correct?
Correct. We will assist with transportation, whether it's personally driving them to another site location, getting them into the coordinated entry system to get a referral, or working with one of our nonprofits or community groups to assist them in getting to a location where they have a verifiable support network, such as family, friends, or shelter.
Perfect. So I just want to emphasize to the community, it's really important to do proper intake, so that's either through, at the police department, or through the homeless task force first, and then they'll direct an individual to the appropriate services, whether it's to the city or through the county.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much for putting this together.
I just want to thank you for doing this. You took a task that we had no idea where to start. You put this together, you took charge. This has been tons and tons of work. You're answering our emails. I know that there are times you're at home and there's an issue with the navigation center, and you've ran out there just to check it out. So I just can't thank you enough for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I too would like to thank you for all of the work that you've done recently and also prior to this, and also the entire team in homeless task force, both uniformed and non-uniformed as well, as well as city manager's office, honestly. I did want to highlight, which I think we kind of brushed over really quickly, that number of the $12.98 per resident for these efforts. I think that that's a really important thing to mention. You know, there were a lot of questions about costs, and I'm glad that we're able to bring this forward and do it in that way. Essentially, it's two lattes, you know, to be able to, for each resident, to be able to work on our efforts to house people and provide them services, and to also provide quality of life for all of our residents. And then finally, I appreciate that you framed things as, you know, how do we define success or what is success? And that's always the question that I'm asking. And I think that you showed some stories of what success looks like, and also mentioned that that is homelessness being rare, brief, and non-recurring. I think that as we move forward, we should talk as a council about what success looks like, how do we define the metrics for that, how do we bring the community along with that? There are certainly challenges with regards to data on how we do that, but there's a lot of opportunity there. And I just wanted to acknowledge also, you know, you mentioned the cost of bed nights with another city, and I know we don't want to bring up the other city, but like, wow, we're really doing such a good job at the use, the efficiency of our funds, and I wanted to compliment the city on that as well. And I really just think this is, the main thing that I get from this is, the goal is to keep progress moving forward. We're doing a great job, and just continue. And I think that that's really important to acknowledge, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Members, we're going to go to close session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The city council takes the opportunity to publicly introduce and identify property negotiations. Al Zalinka, City Manager, Ursula Luna Reynosa, Director of Community Development, and Sean Crumbie, Director of Public Works. Also in attendance, Michael Gates, City Attorney, Robin Eskeloo, City Clerk. Negotiation parties are Timothy Fissender, Vice President of Real Estate for Republic Service. Under negotiations price and terms of payment, real property located at APM numbers 111-372-06 and 111-372-07. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, the city council takes this opportunity to publicly introduce and identify labor negotiations. the city council takes this opportunity to publicly introduce and identify labor negotiations. Al Zalinka, City Manager, Peter Brown, Chief Negotiator. Also in attendance, Jose Rodriguez, Human Resources Manager, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Michael Gates, City Attorney, Robin Eskelou, City Clerk, Eric Para, Chief of Police, Sonny Reeve, Acting Chief Financial Officer, who will all be in today's closed session discussions regarding labor negotiations with Huntington Beach Police Officers Association, POA. Call for a motion in a second to recess to closed session.
All motion?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. We'll go on to closed session.